Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 19, 2016. It's 9:00 a.m. We're at Palm Coast City Hall for a regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. If you'll please rise and join me in a pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We'll call please.
Mayanets.
Here.
Vice Mayor, please excuse, Councilmember DeLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Here.
First item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the April 5th to 2016 City Council Meeting and the April 12th City Council Workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Then to item number two, proclamation recognizing the month of April as National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation Month, and I guess I'll do this one myself. Looked like you're all wet to me. Whereas the city of Palm Coast and the entire state of Florida continue its four ways to manage residential consumption of water and power and to inspire citizens to care for our natural resources, and whereas cities, including Palm Coast, can engage in efforts to inspire their own city as well as neighboring communities to become better environmental stewards, and whereas the fifth annual National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation, presented by the Weiland Foundation and Toyota, with support of the U.S. EPA Water Sense, the Toro Company, the National League of Cities, Conserve Irrigation, and Earth-Friendly Products, is a healthy, nonprofit competition for cleaner communities and a water use and pollution reduction competition between our cities, and whereas with the encouragement of Palm Coast Mayor John Nett's, residents may register their participation in our city's challenge online by making simple pledges to decrease their water use and reduce pollution for the period of one year, thereby assisting their cities to apply state and federal water conservation strategies to target mandated reductions. And whereas during the month of April 2016, the city of Palm Coast wishes to inspire its residents and its neighboring communities to take the Weiland Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation by making a series of online pledges at mywaterpledge.com to reduce their impact on the environment and to see immediate savings in water, trash, and electricity bills. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Palm Coast Mayor John Nett's and the City Council of the city of Palm Coast that the month of April be hereby officially designated National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation Month in the city of Palm Coast, and that all citizens are encouraged to take their challenge by April 30th. Sign this 19th day of April 2016. My pleasure to sign this as mayor. Thank you. You guys want to say a few things?
It's funny we announced the fact of the matter. This morning we ranked third in the country for our population. So let's keep voting.
Thank you all of you.
Last year we finished in the top seven. But all is doing really well for this year. So encourage your neighbors, friends, and folks to push the button. MyWaterPledge.com. Thank you.
We're going to go up on stage and do a picture?
Picture the photo and we'll also show a video.
Come on. Follow me. Walk this way. Let me get a little bit of you. All of you, please, nothing too loud in your size. Good morning.
All right, we'll do a couple. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you. Want to face him? Come on. Hold your hand. Oh, it's me.
Hey, Palm Coast, save water. Take the Palm Coast Water Pledge.
Hi, I'm Palm Coast Mayor John Nett's. By saving water, our businesses and residents save energy, money, and valuable resources. That's why I'm encouraging you to take the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation, April 1st through April 30th. Last year, among hundreds of cities our size, Palm Coast finished a fabulous seventh place in the number of pledges. With your help, I know we can do even better this year. By making a simple pledge to save water and reduce pollution, you're not only doing your part for Palm Coast, you can win any of hundreds of prizes too, including a Toyota Prius. Let's show other cities around the nation how Palm Coast takes care of our planet. Make your pledge throughout the month of April. Go online to www.mywaterpledge.com.
Agenda item number three, proclamation recognizing April as Autism Awareness Month. Mr. Nobiel.
Mayor, Council?
Thanks for your new tradition. No more like that. You must be away from these. Come on up here. Please, let's look at them.
Whereas autism, the fastest-growing developmental disability in the U.S., affecting more than 3 million people, is an urgent public health crisis that demands a national response, and whereas autism is the result of a neurological disorder that affects the normal functioning of the human brain and can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background, and whereas symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impairment of a person's ability to learn, develop healthy, interactive behaviors, and understand verbal as well as nonverbal communication, and whereas the effort to address autism continues, doctors, therapists, and educators can help people with autism overcome or adjust to its challenges and provide early, accurate diagnosis and the resulting appropriate education, intervention, and therapy that are vital to future growth and development, and whereas ensuring that people living with autism have access to the care and services needed to pursue the full measure of personal happiness and achieve their greatest potential, and whereas the city of Palm Coast is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month in the hope that it will lead to a better understanding of this disorder. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of April 2016 be officially designated as Autism Awareness Month in the city of Palm Coast to raise public awareness of autism and the merit of issues surrounding autism, as well as to increase knowledge of the programs that have been and are being developed to support individuals with autism and their families. Sign this 19th day of April 2016, City of Palm Coast, John Nett's, Mayor.
Come up and get a picture. No, you like to say anything? Yeah, go ahead, say something.
Thank you. Just great to get actual awareness out there, get everything out. The sooner you catch it, the easier it is to treat. We call it an hour order pretty early, so it always makes it easier to get it going. Thank you very much.
Being good at this.
Maybe we need one of those sinking ones.
Bill.
Let's come this way, Sydney.
Agenda item number four, proclamation recognizing the week of May 8th, 2016 as turquoise takeover. Who's got that lucky one? Mr. McGuire.
Whereas every five minutes, a woman in the United States is told she has lung cancer, and whereas lung cancer is the number-one cancer killer of women in the U.S., and whereas the lung cancer death rate in women has almost doubled over the past 37 years, and whereas advocacy and increased awareness will result in more and better treatment for women with lung cancer and other lung diseases and will ultimately save lives, and whereas Lung Force is the national movement led by the American Lung Association with the mission of making lung cancer history, uniting women to stand together with a collective strength in determination to lead the fight against lung cancer and for lung health. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the second full week of May 2016 be officially designated as Women's Lung Health Week in the city of Palm Coast. All citizens are encouraged to learn more about the detection and treatment of lung cancer. Sign this 19th day of April 2016, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nett's, Mayor.
Accepting the award? There's no one.
She's actually running late this morning. I think she just walked in, Councilmember McGuire.
Bill, freeze. Step back, Bill.
Hopefully we can do the program later.
Okay, that'd be fine. Agenda item number five, proclamation recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Mr. DeLorenzo.
is and the need for justice and healing, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment statistics unfortunately show that one in five women and one in 33 men will be raped at some point in time in their lives, and one in six boys and one in four girls will experience childhood sexual abuse before the age of 18. And whereas in 2015, the Flagler County Sheriff's Office made 25 sexual assault arrests, and estimates indicate only 20% of sexual assaults are reported to law enforcement, and fewer than 3% result in conviction and incarceration of the perpetrator. And whereas the Family Life Center served the needs of Flagler County's victims last year during 45 crisis interventions, 404 supportive services, and 18 forensic exams, law enforcement interviews, and other proceedings. And whereas it is critical for friends and family members to support victims and help them access community resources such as the Family Life Center and to engage the criminal justice system, and whereas government leaders must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention to support survivors and speak out against harmful attitudes and actions. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Palm Coast Mayor and the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, do hereby designate April 2016 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to help raise awareness and to participate in educational opportunities to create a safer community and a productive future, change for all of us. Sign this 19th day of April 2016, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nett's, Mayor.
Good morning, Trish. Come speak.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to accept this proclamation from the city of Palm Coast. We always ask that our community support victims of sexual assault. It's such a horrific crime to undergo. We at the Family Life Center have begun a Start by Believing campaign, and what we are asking is that if you hear of a victim of crime, ordinarily we take what that victim says for what it is. It's a crime. It's not so much the case with a rape. Oftentimes when a victim comes forward to disclose a rape, we question the victim, we question their motives, question if they are victimized by asking what time of day did it happen, what were they wearing, what were they drinking. And so the Family Life Center is asking all of our community members to stop and take note, and a victim of a rape is as a victim of any other crime, to start by believing. When the victim discloses to a friend or family member, which is historically the first way a victim will reach out, please start by believing what they have to say regardless of where they were, what they were wearing, or what they were drinking. So we implore each and every one of you to start by believing, starting in April, but then moving forward as well. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Jim Adfry, Sheriff of Flagler County. I'd like to acknowledge the Family Life Center and Trish G. Count in particular. Before I took office, we were taking our sexual assault victims for almost a 40-minute ride, sometimes even longer, to get the adequate examinations that they needed. All the things that the Family Life Center does with domestic violence and dealing with displaced families, they took on this role as well. So now, when we do have sexual assault victims, we bring them to a much better place here in our community, and they are seen here at the Family Life Center. So I'd really like to acknowledge publicly Trish and the board, and Rebecca, for all you do for the women and the sexual assault victims of this county. You do incredible job. Thank you.
Grass doesn't grow on a busy playground. a replat. Mr. Landon.
Couple of exciting projects today that you have opportunity to approve, the final plats. Both of them retail centers. So we're going to start off with Island Walk, and Bill will give you the details.
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, I'm sorry to interrupt, but these are quasi judicial matters, so if there's been any ex parte communications, we need to have those disclosed.
Ex parte communications to be disclosed?
No. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry to interrupt.
And Mayor, I should add that this presentation, never mind, that's the next one. Sorry. Bill, go from here. Thank you.
Morning.
This site is commercial. It's about 28.7 acres. The owner developer is Branch Island Walk Associates Limited Partnership, and it's located at northwest corner of Palm Coast Parkway Northeast and Florida Park Drive. Site's currently comprised of three lots within the Palm Harbor Shopping Village subdivision, and the applicant simply wants to create four lots, with three of the lots being located on out parcels along Palm Coast Parkway Northeast, and each of those lot numbers are shown in yellow, so you can see where those three lots are.
And does Council have any questions for staff on this? Some questions. Seeing none, we'll open the meeting for the public, and if in the public, we should be heard on agenda item number six. If you do, please come up to the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting. Back to Council. Additional questions, comments, or motions? Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Thank you very much. Welcome. Agenda item number seven, resolution approving the final plat Shops of Palm Coast Subdivision a replat. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, I guess I'd like to make a comment about how Island Walk really has taken off and looks great. I think the developer promised a nice shopping center, and I think he's producing and coming through with that promise. This next one is the shops at Palm Coast. It's something we've been hearing about for some time, and I understand it's really going to happen sometime soon. Mayor, the, this presentation includes this item and the next item. They're actually two separate action items, but because they're related on the same plat, we're going to do one presentation, and then you can take two separate items. With that, two separate actions. Bill, with that, you'll take it from here.
Okay, this site's located Comm. 2 General Commercial. It's about 12.9 acres and is at the southeast corner of State Route 100 and Beltar Boulevard. The owner developer is PV Palm Coast LLC out of Safety Harbor, Florida. And on June 3rd, 2015, the planning board approved a master plan for the site showing five lots, common area tract, and a little over 60,000 square feet of commercial uses. In this case, the applicant will act as developer and sell off all five lots to end users. Three of the lots are under contract, Lot 2 for a Gate Convenience Store with gas pumps, Lot 3 for an Aldi grocery, and Lot 4 for a tractor supply company store. This plat will simply create five lots plus a common area tract, and the common area tract will be used for an internal access roadway system, a stormwater management system, and also provide for some shared signage opportunities. One of the more important things on the plat is that along Lot 1 on the westerly 12 feet, you can see that in yellow, the applicant will dedicate 12 feet of this land to the city for future right-of-way improvements along Beltar Boulevard. And switching over to the transportation impact fee agreement, in this case, the applicant was required to construct a eastbound turn lane on State Route 100 into the project's only access onto, northerly access onto State Route 100, and additionally, they were required to put in sidewalks along Beltar Boulevard and State Route 100. Both the city and the developer have identified a couple other transportation improvements that would benefit city residents regarding future traffic capacity, and this agreement would allow those improvements to be made once we have received sufficient transportation impact fees from the retailers in this project. The highest priority for these two improvements is Improvement A, which is the northbound right turn lane for vehicles traveling north on Beltar Boulevard that want to turn right on State Route 100. This also includes pedestrian crosswalk improvements along the south side of the intersection and the east side of the intersection. The second improvement is a southbound left turn lane into the project's most southerly access, and you can see there is another access in the middle, but that one is too close to the big intersection up there for vehicles to safely stack and make a left turn lane. In looking at the numbers on this, the three lots under contract would generate about $422,000 in transportation impact fees, and the preliminary cost of these two roadway improvements would be about $250,000 to $350,000. So the three lots themselves that are under contract would generate more than enough to cover the first improvements, and then if we estimate the additional funds for lots one and five, we'll end up with conservatively about, the project would generate about twice in impact fees what the cost of these two projects would be. And if this is approved today, the way it would work is the city would receive transportation impact fees from like probably tractor supply first, then Aldi, and then the Gate Petroleum. Then the city would notify the developer that we have received those impact fees, and then the developer would provide the city a bid for engineering services, and once that's approved, then they would also provide us three bids for constructing the improvements, and the city would have 30 days to review those each time the developer submits something to us on those bids. The agreement also allows the city the opportunity to design and construct the improvements if we so want it. That's the end of our presentation.
Questions? I have one question. Can you go back three slides, I think? That one? One more. This Improvement B, the southern section here, are we adding a lane there?
Correct. So it allows traffic going southbound to sort of, they pull to their left, and then they have a lane that they could set there until there's an opening to make a safe left turn.
And that land doesn't need to be part of an easement? Like the Improvement A, there's that right turn?
No, that, you make those kind of improvements in the right-of-way. So as long as it's in the right-of-way, so the Improvement A is getting 12 feet, and that provides additional room for the 12-foot northbound turn lane. So all those improvements are out there in that right-of-way, and it's probably 100 feet wide, probably right now, maybe 120?
That leads, led me to a question. At that, at the amount of right-of-way we have now, in the future, if it needed to, if the road needed to be expanded to two lanes southbound, would we have enough room for that? And the turning lane?
Let me see if Sean knows an answer to that.
He does. Thank you. Sean Costello, City Traffic Engineer. I believe we have, I believe we have about 100 feet of right-of-way out there. It just depends what we, what the road, if the road does end up being expanded to four lanes, a lot of it is just going to depend on, on what the roadway is going to look like. So if we're going to go out there and we're going to have a wide median, like similar to what we have on Beltar right now, then we may need to look at acquiring additional right-of-way, but we would do as much as we could possible to make sure that we can accommodate our roadway within our right-of-way.
Okay. Mr. Landon, should we consider speaking to the developer about getting 12 foot, the length of the property, so we don't have to go back and try to acquire right-of-way in the future if we needed to widen the roadway?
We've got 100 foot of right-of-way, and you've got 12 feet of lane. That's four lanes, 48 feet. I think we have.
You'd be at five lanes, though, I think, because.
Yeah. Five lanes, okay, you'd add, so that's 60 feet and 100 foot of right-of-way. It would be how wide the median, you just have to make the median smaller, so I don't think it would be necessary just to do an easy math.
We have enough room.
Yes, see, the.
Yes, see, the key to it is if you look at the map, right now, we have three lanes at the intersection, and we're adding a fourth, and it's adding that fourth that is why we need the additional right-of-way. The left turn into the shopping center southbound, there's only two lanes there, so we're adding a third.
Yeah.
And then if you can tell that there's actually, where we have the extra right-of-way, it's on the other side of the street.
Right.
And so the other side of the street is where you'd start adding additional lanes if you went four lanes. If we had to obtain some right-of-way, it'd be very little, and it would just be in their buffer, it would be, uh, we'd be able to obtain it, but right now, my opinion, it would be more of a taking, just to take it, just because we might need it, and that's really not acceptable in today's world.
What is the status of the undeveloped property to the west? That's privately owned?
I don't even think, is that in--
I think it's in the-- Sure if that's in the county or not.
Do not know, Mayor.
But if we had, if at some point we needed to acquire more land, that would be the logical place to go.
Very likely, very likely it could be. I think 100 feet in this type of situation should be enough for four lanes. It may not be a real wide median, but we should be able to keep it within that, that area.
Can I have--
Additional counsel questions? Open the meeting for the public, and if in the public wish to be heard on this agenda item. Come up to the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes, please.
Good morning, George Mayo, Palm Coast. Looking at the map, could you put the other map up that shows the entrance exits? Please, thank you, yes. Nope, okay. The center exit there, which will be for northbound only, and they show a little esplanade, so coming northbound, you'll be an entranceway. Will there be a median between the north and southbound lanes? And if there isn't, I would strongly suggest there be one, because I can guarantee cars are going to pull out there and want to go southbound, and they're just going to wait until they don't see a car, and then pull southbound, whether they go in the right-turn lane heading northbound. Just yesterday, a similar situation with the exit over there by Target, which is supposed to, on Beltar, which is supposed to be northbound only, take a right turn. Pickup truck waited till he saw a gap between cars and cut across lane, headed northbound in the southbound lane, and then took a hard right because he didn't want to go out all the way around. That's with four lanes on that side and two on the other. I can guarantee a similar situation is going to happen in that center exit there. So I would strongly suggest some type of median or fiberglass stakes preventing cars from doing that, so as to prevent any kind of accident, because they're definitely going to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. If you don't approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting. Sean, take that under advisement, please. Back to city council, additional questions, comments, or motion?
Your Honor, I have a question.
Mr. Maguire.
If Sean is taking this under advisement, should we postpone voting on this until we have a modified presentation?
I would hope not. I think we're trying to get this moving forward, and the design of those type of improvements is, would not affect the plat. This is not approving the street improvements, this is approving--
But you'll respond to us when you've studied it and--
Yes, I, I can, uh, yes, the key to this, though, just so you know, is that there is a way to come out of that shopping center and turn left to go southbound on, on Beltar. They don't have to go right, they just have to go to that southern exit, and so usually when you provide people with an opportunity to do it right, they will do that. There may be a few exceptions.
The key word here, Mr. Landon, is usually. I think Mr. Mayo's point is well taken.
Yes, I, but we do have, we do have that ability to get them to go left, to go southbound with this plan, and I think that's critical. If you don't have that ability, then you almost force people to start doing things they shouldn't do, but this way it gives them an opportunity to do it correctly. So it's worked out very well with this site plan. So that's one of the reasons why--
Something that often helps is internal signage.
Yes.
So that until, until people become familiar with the traffic flow, here's your way to get out, to go south.
And that, northern access there, that is a right in and right out only, will have that V kind of triangle island, that actually you have to force yourself to break the law at that point. It doesn't, doesn't work naturally. You don't just come up and have a choice going right or left, your only choice is to go right, and there will be signage there also, Mayor.
Additional questions, comments, or motion?
Move to approve agenda item number seven, resolution approving the final plat, Shops of Palm Coast subdivision, a replat.
Second.
In second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number eight, resolution approving the transportation impact fee credit agreement, including allocation, construction, and dedication of land within PV Palm Coast LLC for improvements to Beltar Boulevard. Mr. Landon, anything additional?
Well, just to throw my support behind the idea of let the developer build this instead of us doing it as a separate project, it just makes sense. We have the safeguards that we require them to get the bids, so we can make sure that the price is fair, and that's really what this is, is let the developer, while they're out there building their shopping center, build the turn lanes, and then we use, instead of their impact, just keeping their impact fees, we use those impact fees for these lane improvements. It is really a good deal.
I have one question, Mr. Mayor. How are the funds maneuvered back and forth?
Well, the, the actual end user, retailers, are required to pay the impact fees at building permit time, so when they come pick up their building permit, they will pay the city, just like everybody else does.
Okay.
And then that will go into our impact fee fund, and then with this agreement, you're authorizing us to actually reimburse the developer, in other words, in this case, the private property owner who's building the shopping center, putting the infrastructure in, those type of things, and just reimbursing them for those lane improvements.
So it's a re, yeah, so it's a reimbursement, we're not actually paying whoever's providing that work?
No.
Because it could be incorporated in the whole--
No, the contract would be between the developer and the contractor.
Right.
And then the developer submits those invoices to us, and we reimburse the contractor. That's what you're authorizing. Typically, we would not do that, obviously, without your authorization, and in this case, it's, we've done this before. Couple of other examples would be the left turn lane on Florida Park Drive into Island Walk, and then the right turn lane into Walmart. Remember how crazy that was, and how, and how Copperstone Village, I believe--
Cobblestone.
Cobblestone Village used their impact fees for those improvements. It's worked out real well for us.
In the unlikely event that one or more of those lots that have already been sold, if they don't proceed with development, then we won't collect the impact fees, the developer is still going to do the improvements, they'll front the money, and then as we collect impact fees, we will reimburse them.
Developer is not required to do the improvements if we don't have the money, but that's why we divided into A and B, just so to give you some, uh, at, at this time. Then when they do come in to, to build and get the impact fees, then they'd have to come back and put the lanes in. But the timing is such that we have plans in here right now for Aldi and Tractor Supply, and I know Gate, if they're not in, they've been in discussion with us. Those three are far enough along, until you see anything go vertical, it's never a guarantee, but those are far enough along, we're very confident. So Mayor, I, I, uh, the developer's not going to want to spend the money unless they know they're going to get reimbursed, but--
But there's no, there's no impact if there's no vertical--
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Correct.
But, but then if the shops aren't there, then you don't have that traffic, and so it all, it all fits together.
Additional questions, comments, or motion? Move to approve.
Public comment.
Can we do public count? Well, this, this was actually presented under the joint of six, seven, eight, but we will hold separate public comment. If anyone wishes to speak separately on agenda item number eight, come up to the podium. Seeing none, approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or motion?
There is a motion on the floor, Your Honor.
Second. Moved in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the consent agenda portion of the meeting. This is agenda items nine through 13. As always, we offer the public the opportunity to speak on any one of these items before council approves them as a group. Anyone like to speak on any of the agenda items nine through 13?
Nine and 12.
Nine and 12. Is there a motion to approve agenda items 10, 11, and 13?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number nine, resolution approving change orders for additional services during the construction phase of Holland Park Improvement Project. Landon, any comments?
This is a direct result of delays we've experienced with this project and needing the engineers to stay on the job. Most, if not all of this, will be reimbursed to the city with liquidated damages caused by, if any delays are caused by the developer. That's to be determined, but, uh--
Landon, how does the city go about getting reimbursed for the cost overrun?
Well, the liquidated damages is just a matter of us withholding final, a portion of the final payment to the contractor, so then we just didn't pay as much as anticipated, then we use those funds for additional costs.
And that's our plan.
Yes. You know, and once again, that's all, some of the delays were, have not been the contractor's fault, and they aren't being held responsible for that, so those details will all be wrapped up at the end.
No, but Mr. Landon, some of the media has held up the city for saying that, that we're just going to throw some more money at it without, or get reimbursed.
Can't control with the--
And I wanted to clarify that, so I'm glad Jack went ahead, and if he hadn't have pulled it for discussion, I would have.
Yep. Yeah, it's, uh, we've had some, I mean, from, whether they're tortoises or other items, I mean, there's just a variety of things that have held this project up. Some of them go smoothly, and some of them don't, and this one is one of those that we've, we've seen some difficulties in.
And clearly, some of the delays are not the fault of the contractor.
Yes.
As I understand, one of the issues was gopher tortoise relocation. You can't relocate them unless the weather is 75 degrees or warmer. That's something we have much control over, nor does the developer. On the other hand, there were clearly delays that were the developer's fault or the contractor's fault, and that's where we're going to collect liquidated damages.
Exactly.
Since we removed this one from the agenda, are there anyone who wish to speak on agenda item number nine?
Jack Cow, Palm Coast. When you sign a contract with a developer or whoever, doesn't he have to, I don't know, prepare for all these incidences that might happen, that might not happen? You know, you're saying it's not his fault. Well, nothing is anybody's fault unless it's, it's done deliberately, but people know that there are things that have to be preserved, have to be moved. It's the same as if you're going to do with the turtles, right? Everybody knows that you have to preserve their, their rights, so I don't understand how you could say it's not the developer's fault. He signs a contract, he's supposed to be finished by such and such a date. If he doesn't, that's what, that's his penalty. Now, my next question is, how do you determine the penalty?
Got an answer for you. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council. The issue of fault, if you were to generate a contract that says the contractor is responsible for each and every foreseeable and unforeseeable incident, the bid price would be so astronomically high that you wouldn't be able to afford. There has to be reasonableness in the contract. There are things that nobody can anticipate until you get the shovel in the ground, so the contract is a balance between protection of the city and also trying to ensure that the contract that you get is reasonable and affordable for the taxpayers' dollars. How do you determine the damages, the benefit, the amount of liquidated damages?
In this case, it's actually in the contract, usually it's $1,000 a day, is that the case? Yes. It's contract that says every delay that the contractor is responsible for is $1,000 reduction in the contract price. The, if I may give one example on this one, is that, you know, we, we provide a design for the contractor that says we need to build a road. You're to excavate so many feet down, and then put road base in its place, and then put the asphalt on top of the road base. Once they dig down and we find what we call unacceptable material, or in this case, muck that is not a good road base, and the road was going to fail soon, so we tell them to dig down deeper. That's time, that's money, that's not their fault. They were told, and the contract, to dig, you know, two, whatever it was, two feet or whatever, now we're telling them, oh, you got to go down four feet and add more material? That's the kind of things you don't know until you actually, as the mayor was saying, and, and those are unforeseen, but they are obligated to build it as per design, but then when we're out there and we know that the design didn't fit the actual underground conditions. That's just one example. There's others where they just had a subcontractor that didn't show up for, for weeks. Well, that's on them, you know, that's totally on them, and those are what we end up determining as to what days and what conditions are not their fault, and which ones are.
City council, additional questions, comments, or motion on agenda item number nine?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number 12, resolution approving expenses for roadway bores for the Beltar Median Landscape and Irrigation Project. Mr. Landon.
I think everybody has noticed that we are progressing with our median improvements on, on Beltar, south of Palm Coast Parkway. We have divided this project up into segments so that we could stay within our capital improvement plan. The last segment is the remaining portion of the median from Royal Palms down to State Road 100. We've actually gotten that project started by extending reuse or reclaimed water line along Royal Palms to Beltar, and then we're now going to be able to use our reuse water to water the median. The first thing you do, obviously, before you do the plans, is you put the irrigation system in, and our crews will do the, will be the contractor on this project, and we will install the irrigation line from Royal Palms down to State Road 100, but we don't have the boring equipment, so all this contract is for is to bore the irrigation line under the intersections. Every time you hit an intersection, you got to go under the intersection and come back up, and that's all this is. Later on, the complete project will be coming forth to city council. This is in our budget for this year, and we will be purchasing the rest of the irrigation line, the plants, all the other things that go along with this. The complete project will come your way. Getting the boring out of the way and getting the boring contractor scheduled and done just helps the schedule of the whole project.
Counsel questions? Seeing none, we'll open the meeting for the public, and if in the public wish to be heard on agenda item number 12. Approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, back to council, additional questions, comments, or motion?
Move approval.
Second. Second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. Please come up to the podium, give us your name, and limit your contribution to three minutes.
Good morning, Robert McDonald, Palm Coast.
Good morning.
Like, I have two questions, and they're both directed to the city attorney. Does the city plan on creating a background and a fingerprint requirement prior to this year's election for our candidate for city council and for the mayor? And if so, when are they going to do it, and if not, why? And my second question is, would the city be responsible if they chose not to do a background check slash fingerprint requirement? Would the city be responsible if a council person or the mayor did have some-- Would the city be responsible if a council person or the mayor did have some unrelated issues, unreported issues, I'm sorry? And would, and would the city was sued for damages resulting from the undisclosedure of a particular item? How are we doing for time, Mayor? Do we got time?
We'll get an answer to your question.
Okay.
Next speaker.
I think he was just asking about his time.
I have a second question.
Oh, I thought those were two questions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir. Okay. This is really important to the city council to consider. Obviously, everybody knows what, what I'm holding in my hand. The fire department came to my house last week and changed all my smoke dete, I'm gonna, the fire department came and changed all my smoke detectors in my house last week, free of charge. Fortunately, one of the firefighters pulled down a smoke detector, and it was defective. So obviously, I went out and replaced it. But the average homeowner doesn't change their batteries, and they wouldn't have known, and I being a retired firefighter, would not have known that I had a defective smoke detector had it not been for the fire department. So what I would like to ask the council to do is, because insurance companies unfortunately don't supply the fire department with smoke detectors and/or batteries anymore. I don't know why. But maybe the city could consider having a program where either the city would supply smoke detectors and/or batteries to make these guys' job a lot easier. Because it's, it's a lot cheaper to replace a fifteen-dollar smoke detector than it is to lose your house. So I would like the council to consider helping the fire department, either buy smoke detectors for families that can't afford them, or at least supply the fire department with batteries to help people who can't afford the batteries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I want to say that y'all have done a wonderful job on Island Walk and also on Holland Park. But I'd like to address the issue of, of traffic on Florida Park Drive, and we're concerned that more traffic will end up going down Florida Park Drive to get to Island Walk or to Holland Park. And we just wanna know what the city has planned to deter that from happening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is John Brady. I certainly do not want to be accused of not wanting to save the city money, especially since the city debt is a hundred and seventy million dollars, and our ratio of debt to revenue is a hundred and twenty-one percent. But I have some serious questions about the proposed loan to Americas Bank. Help me to understand how the city council has the authority to approve a forty-three, forty-three million dollar loan when Section seven, Paragraph three, subset C of the city charter states limitation to the council's contracting authority. Unless authorized by the electors of the city at a duly-held referendum, the council shall not enter into a lease purchase or any other contract, any other unfunded multi-year contract, the repayment of which extends in excess of thirty-six months or exceeds fifteen million dollars. For the record, I have asked to see the contract with Americas Bank and have yet to see it. I would also like to know about the closing cost on this loan. I would also like to see a chart outlining the payments on the two-hundred, two thousand seven bond, and if it's not recast, as compared to the payments on the entire loan for Americas. Finally, what happened to the scheduled bond payment that was due this year? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get an answer for your question. Next speaker.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Marion Trusie. I'm the Neighborhood Watch Leader and spokesperson for the residents in the R section of Palm Coast. Residents from our group were at the May fifth, two thousand and fifteen council meeting. We asked for an angled fence like the one on Palm Coast Parkway over Route ninety-five to be put in the backside area of Ralph Carter Park. At the end of the meeting, Mayor Nets told us money would be put aside for this fence. Mr. Landon stated engineers were working on this. It's been almost a year, and no such fence has been put up. We residents continue to have our homes vandalized and to be harassed and cursed at by people accessing Ralph Carter Park from Richardson Drive. As an example, one evening, two little children who live on Richardson Drive were riding their bikes near the drainage ditch. Residents saw two men pull up in a truck and park next to the ditch. The men jumped out of the truck, pulled up their hoods to hover, cover their faces, then climbed the fence to the park. They came back over the fence in a few minutes. They jumped back in the truck and sped away, just missing the children. This incident, type of incident occurs all the time. It appears the back area of the park is being used for some type of sales or exchange. We have shown pictures of the individuals and their vehicles to deputies. We also see people arbitrarily throw oranges and branches at our homes, then jump over the fence to the park. These are not little children, they are seventeen or eighteen years old. Perhaps they're high on something, we don't know. Several of our mailboxes have been knocked down also. We residents have attended Neighborhood Watch meetings, we've spoke at council meetings, we've been interviewed by newspaper reporters, and on the TV news, all for the same issue over and over again, yet nothing has been done to help us. Ms. Shipley, Mr. Di Lorenzo, and Mr. Nobiel have been in my home regarding, with, meeting with residents regarding the same issue, yet nothing has changed. People, please. We residents do not deserve to live like this. There needs to be a fence in the backside area of the park, which can't be climbed, to stop access from Richardson Drive. It's not a lot, lot of, it's not a large area of fence that's needed. If you're looking at the drainage ditch, it's twenty-five feet to the right. From the left of the drainage ditch, it's, it's just down to the back of the park. Can someone please help us and tell us when some type of fence is gonna be put back there to stop all this from Richardson Drive? We need help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Ed Fuller. Honorable Mayor Nets, Honorable Jason Di Lorenzo, Honorable Steve Nobiel, Honorable Bill McGuire, Virginia Smith, City Clerk, Jim Landon, City Manager, Bill Reichman, City Attorney. I come here today on behalf of my grandson. We attended the extravaganza, and that was unbelievably, what a great event. I did wanna be remiss and not come here and congratulate the employees from the Parks and Recreation for their heartfelt gratitude and thanks and welcoming attitude that they showed me and my family, and my grandson just absolutely loved it. And I wanna mention these people by name, so I apologize to these individuals if I mispronounced their name, 'cause I didn't get a chance to personally talk to them. Roxy Gonzalez, James Hurst, Ginger Pamel, Alex Boyer, Crystal Long, Mary McGowan, Shira Jackson, Natasha Cangelosi, Ally Rock Yanaco, and CJ Johnston. They took time off on Saturday before Easter, a big holiday, to make our family a holiday a very wonderful and real experience. And it was a great call by not having that Easter hat on today, 'cause it rained, we had torrential rains. So I wanna thank you all, and I wanna say this from heartfelt, from our family, to everyone that participated in that. It was a wonderful event, and I just wanna say thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your kind words. I'm sure staff appreciates them. Next speaker.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. As we move along in our lifetime and the city grows and we develop a little more problems, I think now is the time to really consider changing the charter. There are things that come up that I think should be put into the charter as a, for instance, all right? I think that no one should run for office unless they live in Palm Coast a same amount of time. I mean, not somebody that comes from the north, settles down, he's here for six months, and all of a sudden, he wants to become a council member. Now, you and I both know that you can't learn anything about the city in six months, but that's, that's, that's going a little bit deep. I just brought it as an example. But there are other things that come up, things that when they establish the charter, right, they, maybe they never, never thought about it, or maybe they didn't think we would get this big. But there are things that should be changed, or things that should be altered. And I, I think it's now is the time to do it. Not a year from now or two years from now. I think now is the time to sit down, talk about it, and say, this is what we need, and we'll get somebody to give us a suggestion. So I say, think about it. We need it, and we need it badly.
Thank you.
Good morning, Courtney Muccio with the American Lung Association. I just wanna say thank you for having us here, and we are here to accept the proclamation right, for recognizing Turquoise Takeover for Women's Health Week, May ninth through May fourteenth. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can we do a photo walk?
We'll be back. We're coming up here for a photo shoot.
Thank you, sir.
St. Patrick's Day, green shirt, green tie. It's a wild time, too. Here, we hold the proclamation. Oops, we'll try a little proclamation.
All right, we'll do a couple. One, two, three.
Back to comments from citizens. A next speaker, please. No one approached the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. But first, let's see if we can get some answers to some of the questions. With the question about background check, I've discussed that with the city attorney, I've discussed that with the supervisor of elections, and I've also discussed that at the Tallahassee level. And the reality is that there is nothing that requires it, suggests it. And the issue of responsibility, so suppose we did a background check and found out that Mr. Di Lorenzo... Good, I'm glad you went that way. I don't know. Did something that would, would, would show up on his record.
My record is spotless.
Your record is spotless. Let's assume there was a little blemish on your record. At what point does that little blemish become noteworthy enough that, that somebody ought to publicize it? Each candidate, when they, they file for election, they expose themselves to public scrutiny, to the media scrutiny. Quite frankly, there's nothing that I've been able to discover that would suggest that, A, the city should or could do a background check, and even if we did, there's no responsibility other than the part of the voters to be discriminating in choosing their candidates. The issue of the city supplying batteries or smoke detectors, thank you for your kind words about our fire department. Due to my temporary, hopefully temporary disability, I actually had them come to my home and change my batteries. The problem is that there are many, many different types of smoke detectors. Some battery-operated, some not, some with replacement batteries, some not. Not all smoke detectors are compatible with all systems that exist. So for the city to try to stock a variety of smoke detectors and/or batteries just simply is taking over subsidizing what is really a public and a private responsibility. If I provide free batteries to Mr. Di Lorenzo, then I have to provide free batteries to Mr. Nobiel, and that becomes a responsibility that really is not part of the city. Traffic plans on Florida Park Drive, as most of you know, I live off Florida Park Drive. Island Walk is not yet complete, but I have not seen any significant increase in traffic. I'm not aware of any, but it is something that we're gonna continue to monitor. To the allegation that the city has a hundred and seventy million dollars worth of debt, let me correct that, that is absolutely incorrect. The city has no debt. The debt is a utility department debt. That is not a part of the city per se. So therefore, the portion of the city charter that the gentleman referred to does not apply to what the utility department does. The city has no debt. There is no taxpayer dollar involved in this reef, in this refinancing. It is a utility debt, and it is paid for one hundred percent out of utility rates. The issue of the fence in the R section of Palm Coast continues to be an issue. Quite frankly, I'm not convinced that a fence, a taller fence, a bigger fence, an angled fence will solve the problem, but it's something we will look at again and again. Kind words about the extravaganza and Parks and Recreation staff, they do a wonderful job. Charter change. Mr. Reichman, I do believe we do have a resident requirement. Do we not in our charter?
Yes, in order to qualify for, for, you have to be a resident. There's not a timeframe specifically for qualification, but you have, obviously have to be a resident in order...
And, and of your district also, if you're in for council.
Correct, yeah. I thought the, but the, I thought the narrow question was, is there a minimum requirement? And I do not believe that is a minimum.
And while I agree with Mr. Carroll completely, the only way to really know the issues of Palm Coast is to live here and experience them, I'm not sure that six months, or two years, or one year, or six years is, is the answer. Again, I think the answer lies with the voters. If you feel that a candidate with more years of residence is better equipped to handle the city's issues than a candidate with fewer, that's the way you'll vote. Ultimately, I think this is an issue for the voters to decide. And I think that handles most of the questions. Discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Di Lorenzo, I'm gonna start with you, sir.
No, no, nothing, thank you.
Mr. Nobiel?
Two, two quick things. First, a quick question, really shouldn't bring it up here, but just to answer. Since we're talking about Island Walk shops, I was there yesterday, and I was pulling out on to, or I was driving on Celica, is it Celica Way? The exit?
Yeah.
And it's a very wide exit, and there's one arrow that points forward. Is that not completed yet, or? I mean, it, it was a, it was a mess. There were cars three across, and you couldn't figure out who's going where, 'cause all there was, it used to be two lanes, a right lane and a left lane. Now there's just one big arrow pointing forward, and it's, it's at least two lanes coming out of...
Coming out of Island Walk?
Yeah. No, Celica Way is not part of Island Walk.
Well, it's, that intersection is...
Yeah, coming out of, coming out of Island Walk, yeah.
I think technically, that's King's Way.
King's Way, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I take, first I've heard of it, we'll take a look.
Yeah, it's just, it's just one giant arrow.
It should be a, a...
Forward. Yeah, there's, it's not there.
You mean, paint it on the street?
Yeah, paint it on the street, yeah.
We'll, uh...
And, and there was like, nobody knew, and one guy stopped, of course, with the biggest car stopped in the middle. So nobody could make a, a left turn, a right turn, you know? Fortunately, the light...
Isn't there a left turn, isn't there a left...
Arrow in green.
Isn't there a left turn arrow there?
Yes. Yes, but if just the left turn arrow goes, and that truck, that, that guy with the Hummer...
Something we'll need to look at.
Yeah, yeah, it was just odd, I was...
There may be some interim things we can do, but ultimately, this is gonna be part of the Old Kings Road widening process.
Oh, all right. Well, just painting, yeah.
Meantime, there needs to be two lanes going out of there.
Yeah, it used to be. So it just surprised me. And I probably never noticed until that Hummer stood in the middle. And you know who you are out there, so don't do that again. Second, the, the Richardson Drive. I'd like to know... I'd like to know, and I don't know how to do this, but this is what I'd like to try and get to, is do we, are we having a potential problem in the park as far as illegal dealings of sorts? You know, I wanna separate kids jumping the fence and illegal activity being done in the park. You know, when you see a car pull up, somebody get out, and somebody get back in, and the car drive away, it's usually not a, it's usually not a good thing. You know, it's something, so I like to know how we could go about, I mean, I mean, is going as far as working with the sheriff and saying, can we, can we...
If I, if I could...
Sure.
Yes, we've been working with the sheriff and, and it has been a priority. If, you notice, most of the comments, it's not in the park, it's on Richardson Drive. And sheriff's office has also spent a lot of time dealing with, with that. We haven't had problems in the park...
Okay.
...that we're aware of. Not, you know, we hear stories in every park...
Right, right.
That there's people doing things that people wonder about as to what that activity is, and it's a constant responsibility of sheriff and the city to try to discourage and eliminate inappropriate activity. We'll continue to do that. But Ralph Carter Park is very active right now. I mean, it's got a lot of, we've got a lot of activities there. It is a, it's turned out to be a very, very nice park if there's illegal activities going on Richardson Drive. And there have been some arrests on Richardson Drive.
Yeah.
So, but Mark is in the audience listening to this, and we'll continue to push hard, and we'll continue to ask the sheriff's office to pay specific attention to that, any area that is reported that there's suspicious activity, which is close to this fence area is what they...
Yeah, and that's it. It's, that area is far from the playing area.
Yes.
It's not, it's not like you jump over the fence and you're on the basketball courts. It's a, it's a distance, you know, out there. And, you know, it'd be, it'd be easy to detect something's going on out there, because really nothing should be going on out there. It's, it's nothing, it's grass.
We work hard on trying to make sure that, I mean, obviously, we want our parks to be safe, and we'll continue to work with that and with the sheriff's office to make sure that, that they're as safe as possible.
Good. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wire.
I have nothing.
Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you and I will be introducing an attorney-client session in just a little bit, so I'll, I'll save my, keep my powder dry.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
I would just like to announce the annual Arbor Day event coming up. It's a big event, and it's where you bring a canned food and you get a free, free tree. Very popular event where we hand out the trees. It is May 7. There is a 5K run that starts at 8 o'clock. The actual Arbor Day celebration starts at, at 9 and runs till 2 that day at Central Park, right, right here. Every year, we have butterflies, butterfly release and a lot of nice vendors. Great, great event. Hopefully, people come out and enjoy that. Mayor, with that, that's all I have.
One thing I would add on the Arbor Day event, for the first time, the city is going to sponsor a shredding truck. So if you have tax forms that you wanna get rid of and you don't just wanna throw them out in the recycle bin, or if you've got sensitive papers that you want to be sure don't fall into the wrong hands, bring them to our event. We'll have a truck there, and you can shred your documents.
It's a, it's one of the private vendors that do this with certification to make sure that, you know, we aren't going, the city isn't going to touch them, that's just truck that ensures that they are...
That's why I wanna make sure, it's not just a wheel that pushes the documents in and then they go back in.
No, no, this is, this is one of those that companies use to make sure the documents are destroyed and doesn't get out in public.
At this time, I'm going to recess the city council meeting, and the city council is going to reconvene for an executive session with our attorney. Present at that meeting will be myself, council member Di Lorenzo, council member McGuire, council member Nobiel, city manager Jim Langen, and the two city county, the two city attorneys, Deborah Bab Nutcher and William E. Reichman. This is to discuss a matter that cannot be discussed openly in the public at this time because it involves litigation. There will be a court reporter there, a transcript of the meeting will be taken, and when the issue is resolved, that transcript will become part of the public record. After the executive session, we will reconvene this meeting for the purposes of adjournment. But there will be nothing other than a motion to adjourn, so the public is more than welcome to leave at this point. At this time, we stand in recess.
Just, Mr. Mayor, if I could...
And we will reconvene in five minutes for an executive session.
Are we required to indicate the estimated length of the attorney-client session? And I would indicate it would be about 45 minutes.
Forty-five minutes, give or take a little bit.